Welcome. Welcome, everyone. Before we start our meeting, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Kemna, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, February 20th, 2023 City Council Meeting. This is also available to join virtually. The link is on the website at JeffersonCityMo.gov, listed on the agenda, along with a call-in participation number. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Deacon. Fitzwater. Hensley.
Present.
Kemna.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. First want to recognize, we have Mr. David Grallner here, and we're all familiar with Mr. Grallner, but we appreciate you being here now that Mr. Sanders has retired, as we have an interim period, so thank you for serving.
All right, thanks for having me. I appreciate it, and I'll try to do my best.
Great, and we all know you already, but we, I wanted to at least introduce you to those that may not, and appreciate your service to the city. And also, at this time, I like to recognize whenever we have scouts in the audience, and we do have one here tonight, so we'd love to welcome you up to the podium, and if you'd like to give us your name, and what school you're going to, and maybe what badge, and you can pull the mic down there if you need to.
I am Adam Sisum. I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School, Troop 104. I am working on the Mayor Badge of Citizenship in the Community. One of the requirements is to come here tonight, so here I am.
Great. Well, we're happy to have you here tonight. We hope that you learn a lot, and if you have any questions after the meeting, you're welcome to reach out to me or any of our council members. We'd be happy to help you with that badge, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item five, public hearings. We have a few of those tonight. We will start with item A, Bill 22-103.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning three acres, three acres of land addressed as 1110 Cedar City Drive from M1 Light Industrial to PUD Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary PUD plan.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I get the PowerPoint pulled up? So this bill pertains to property located on the corner of Oilwell Road and Cedar City Drive. So up on the screen is the property. It's a very large farm field, but the property that this bill pertains to is just the corner that's located there in the hatched area, consisting of about three acres. This bill would rezone that hatched area from its current designation of M1 Light Industrial to a PUD Planned Unit Development zoning category, and approve a preliminary PUD development plan for the property. So this is an aerial photo of the property. It's a little dated, but it does show some excavation, some dirt work, in order to raise the elevation of the property and meet floodplain regulations. This is the preliminary PUD plan that's contained with the application. The preliminary PUD plan consists of a 2,800-square-foot retail building. The design of the building would resemble a rustic barn, and the purpose is for retail farm-to-market use there. There is one item worth calling out within the PUD plan, and that's that it would contain a gravel parking lot. That's a deviation from normal paved parking standards, but the driveway, the driveways serving the parking lot would be paved, so it'd be paved connections to the, to the street, and the farm-to-market retail use is a seasonal type of use. Also, the parking lot landscaping, instead of being clustered around the parking lot, is expected to consist of fruit trees located along the street lines. We do have the final PUD plan, which is currently undergoing staff review, and show that has shown up on the screen, and shows the finer details of the paved driveway, the parking lot layout, the building, and tree locations, as well as all utility connections, et cetera. This item was reviewed at the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of January 12th, and a recommendation for approval on a vote of seven to zero, and the applicants, Jay and Kim Fisher, are here if there are any questions. So I'm happy to answer any questions prior to opening the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? Ms. Councilman Spencer?
Just a quick, for clarification, you had mentioned that the gravel lot is a deviation from, I guess, normal processes. What's the reasoning behind that? I mean, I'm supportive of it, I just, just for clarification for, for the audience.
The applicant might be able to add more to that, but I think it's largely the seasonal nature, that it's not a use that would necessarily be open year-round, and the expense of providing a paved parking for, for a seasonal use.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing done, we will open the public hearing portion. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on Bill 22-103, and we would, at this time, invite the applicant, invite the Fishers to the podium, and welcome you all here this evening. Glad to have you here, and I know you mentioned before the meeting, you're mostly here to answer questions, and we know that I've, I've had several people that seem to be pretty excited about this concept here in Jefferson City, so if you want to tell us a little bit about it.
Well, first off, thanks for having us. We appreciate it. We've been, well, as I think some of you know, you know, we've had the corn maze and the pumpkin patch over in North Jeff City for a long time, and we've been growing produce, watermelons, cantaloupes, sweet corn, tomatoes, probably for 20 or 25 years, and Kim has done farmer's market, you know, weekly for a long time, and we thought it would be a great idea. I've always had this vision of having our own market where people, we would have set hours, where people could come to the, come to the market and buy locally grown fruits, vegetables, possibly even, we'd like to branch off and invite other people that are producing, you know, beef, pork, chicken, anything locally, but, but our, our theme is Missouri-grown, locally-grown, and it would be a seasonal market, you know, probably June through October.
Great. Well, I know there's a lot of people excited for that, so that's wonderful, and I know Councilman Spencer had a question about parking lots, so I don't know if that's something you would want to address.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. The reason for the gravel lot is it's a pretty, it's a pretty big area, and the cost of, the expense of paving, you know, almost, probably a half or three-quarters of an acre around the building. The building's gonna, gonna resemble, I was just gonna, I'm wanting to build it just like a turn-of-the-century barn with timber frame on the inside, and we'll, we'll have, there'll be a porch across the front and a sidewalk going up to it, but the expense to, as everybody knows, it's just a seasonal market. It's, it's not, not compared to like a commercial piece of property on Missouri Boulevard or something, and it, this, the expense of it would, would kind of kill the project.
And I, and I fully support it. I understand completely. I just think that, just for clarification of, for, for people that, well, they required me to put, you know, a concrete parking lot, and I, I just think that our city staff use a common sense discretion. I appreciate that, and, and I think that's important.
And we do too, because it, it's really expensive, and we are in a pretty, you know, if you're familiar with the area, it's pretty much an agricultural type area, and the other, the other businesses around there also have gravel parking lots, so.
Well, if it resembles anything that you've already placed in front of our community, we know it's going to be quality. It's, it's going to be well-received, and, and we really appreciate you making an investment over there, and I'm excited.
Well, that's.
Thank you.
Probably a lot of customers in this room, so thank you.
Well, that's very kind of you to say that. We appreciate it.
Great. Are there any other, Councilwoman Ward?
And, and just a comment, probably a gravel parking lot would be better in that area due to, due to the flooding. It's permeable, and, you know, all that gra, or all that concrete would, you know, cause.
Well, it, because we had to raise it to the 100-year flood mark, it is kind of, it's up on a mound. I don't know if any of you go past there. We've been hauling a lot of field dirt there for a couple of years, because we got to get it pretty high. Well, it's all tapered anyway, and I, I actually think it would, it would drain and soak into the ground better, running off the roof and stuff with the gravel, rather than the concrete that would just kind of run it out into the middle of the road.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, that is a, will be a nice addition, so we'll see if there's anyone else here to speak and move forward with the public hearing, but thank you for what you're doing to bring more business in utilizing that agriculture space, and if you ever want to bring samples, we'll be ready to try them, so.
We'd love to have you all over there. We'll get it opened up.
Wonderful. Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 22-103? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and take up Bill 103. Any further questions or discussion? And you read it already the first time, so, all right, roll call, please.
Deacon. Fitzwater. Hensley.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. All right, congratulations. Thanks. All right, item B, we have Bill 22-104.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning, rezoning 9.09 acres of land located in the 2,200 block of St. Mary's Boulevard from C2 General Commercial to R A2 High Density Residential.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk read, this property pertains to property on, or this bill pertains to property located on St. Mary's Boulevard just east of the Budweiser Distributor. Up on the screen is the, the property highlighted in blue. It consists of just over nine acres. This bill would rezone the property from its current designation of C2 General Commercial to an R A2, a multifamily residential zoning category. Here's an aerial photo, current aerial photo of the property. It's basically wooded, but there is some paved parking for former, currently vacant office buildings located on the south side of St. Mary's Boulevard. Other than that, the property's undeveloped. It's worth pointing out that to the east of the property is some multifamily buildings, including some four-unit and six-unit buildings. The purpose of the request is to develop the property with a duplex-type development, and up on the screen is a preliminary subdivision plat that was reviewed and approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, showing how the property would be developed with 25 duplexes located off of a horseshoe-shaped street that would be built. The applicant, Mr. Joe Sheppers, could not be here this evening, but Teresa, is it Tolxdorf, is here in case there are any questions, his sister. I'd be happy to answer any questions by the, the council prior to opening the public hearing. This bill was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of January 12th, and was recommended for approval on a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barron? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of Bill 104? Welcome, Mrs. Tolxdorf. Happy to have you here this evening.
Thank you very much for having me. I just want to say that this is very preliminary on our part. We know that this is the first step to get, we needed to get approval of the re, just rezoning, so, or district and whatever, but yeah, we're looking into what we can do there, and I know there's housing shortages in Jeff City, and we are hoping that this might help alleviate some of that, so, thank you.
We appreciate that. Any questions for Mrs. Tolxdorf? Okay, all right, we appreciate that, and, and you're right, we, we do have a need for housing, so that, that is wonderful. Any other, anyone else here to speak on Bill 22-104? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Is there any council questions or deliberation? Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater. Hensley.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deacon. Bill passes.
Okay, bill passes, so thank you again, and congratulations, and appreciate you working to bring some future housing to Jefferson City. Item C, we have Bill 22-105.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a PUD plan amendment for property located at 311 Bolivar Street.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This property, or this bill pertains to property located on the northeast corner of Bolivar Street and McCarty Street. It's a three-story coffee, and so up on the screen is a aerial photo of the property highlighted, although the aerial photo is out of date. This is a more recent aerial photo, which shows the property under development with the coffee shop. Final PUD plan for the property is shown up on the screen. It shows four parking spaces accessed via a short driveway off of the alley that located there on the right-hand side of the, the final PUD plan drawing, or the north side of the property, and so this proposed bill, or this bill would amend the PUD plan for the property to reorient that parking to eight spaces located head in off of the alley as shown up on the screen. And I do have a photo showing the, the rear portion of the property. It is currently developed in conformance with the, the final PUD plan with respect to that parking, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council have, may, may have prior to opening the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay, and we'll open the public hearing, but before we do that, I'll call on Councilman Lester.
Yes, I'm going to request that this Bill 105 be placed on the informal calendar. My understanding is that the owner and the city staff are still in discussion about the, about the proposal.
Okay, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing portion, if anybody would like to speak for this bill, and then we will keep it open for the next meeting. We'll basically discontinue it when we're finished and bring it back up at the next council meeting. So is there anyone here that would like to speak? And I do want to just recognize that we do have the Schaefer Cutters here, the owners of the property, so we appreciate you being here tonight, and since the bill is going to be placed on the informal day, we'll wait until the next council meeting for, for discussion, but we appreciate your appearance here this evening. So with that, anyone else here to speak? Okay, so what we will do is officially, we call it discontinued, so that's the terminology, so this particular, um, open, or public hearing is discontinued till the next meeting. Any, any council discussion or questions before we move on from that? Okay, so now we will go on to item six, appointments by the mayor, and we've had a request to take those up individually from Councilman Spencer, so we will start with item A, cultural arts, and we'll move on to Mrs. Strope.
The first one to the Cultural, Cultural Arts Commission is Wood, Mitchell Woodrum.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that appointment passes. Historic preservation.
Thank you. The point, the recommended appointment is for Brian Warren.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion on this appointment? Questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Human Relations Commission.
Thank you. The recommended appointment is Lorraine Schofield.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Councilman Spencer?
Just for clarification, this is not the candidate that lives outside the city limits. I think that they do live inside the city limits, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I think they're Ward five.
Ward five, that's what I was thinking, okay. And also, how far, how in-depth do we get into the, the background or, um, criteria for, for serving on committees?
So these candidates all received a background check, and then we also did a check through our city clerk's office for any tax liens owed towards the city, and also with the finance department for any money owed to the city. That would include accounts receivable, utility billing, and, there was a third, and parking. Thank you.
So, and I'm just, I'm just speaking in generalities here, so if there was tax arrears for county, that, that's not caught or?
Correct. We don't check with counties, state, federal, any kind of tax arrears with those.
And, you know, I, if, I think that needs to be looked into in the future to have some consistency of qualifications and, and, you know, criteria that, that candidates meet to serve on, on boards and commissions, so, thank you.
And this particular list, actually all of them were on the February 2nd email that Mrs. Strope sent out to the council as well, so they had a chance to review the applications. Any other questions? And we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so since we had some nays, should we do a roll call to confirm? Let's do a roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kemna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
No.
Spicer.
No.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Deacon. Fitzwater. I have six ayes.
Okay, motion passes. Tax increment financing.
Thank you. The recommended appointment is Mike Downing.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. We have Evergreen follow-up informational discussion to keep this moving forward, and I know that council had spoken about having staff bring back some information, so I'll have Steve, Steve give us a brief overview, and then we'll have some discussion.
I did provide at least one way to pay for the implementation of the Evergreen recommendations for this fiscal year at the 50th percentile. There certainly are other ways to achieve that same purpose. I think part of the staff request was, how do you want to talk about those, whether you want to talk about those tonight, or at a workshop of full council, or at a committee meeting, or et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll, and as you noted, there's the decision points that council has, such as the 50th percentile and what that could look like, and there were other discussion on things like compression and other, other items in the Evergreen study, so perhaps council could think about giving some direction to move forward. So, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you very much. Steve, I see in the memo, this is based on an implementation date of March 24th, so that would be, that would be after even our second March meeting, right? So we have a, a few more meetings, a couple more meetings after this to try to hammer something out.
Correct.
Yeah, and, you know, the results of that study were, were pretty dramatic, and the numbers were significant, and, you know, if there were a way for us to get up to that 70th percentile by March 24th, I suspect we'd all be eager to, to line that up, but as was probably expected with a number that large, at least in my estimation, it's, to get us up to where we're very competitive, will be a phased project. Probably not something that we can do up to that, that very high mark yet this fiscal year, and maybe not even something that we can totally accomplish in budgeting for the next fiscal year, but I think we can continue making significant, if incremental, progress as we go forward. But, yeah, getting us up across the board to at least the 50th percentile in the areas that were noted in the report, particularly if we can do it in a way where we are also, you know, resolving compression issues that have been identified, I think has to be our, our first priority in this phased project. You know, you list several potential sources here for funds. You know, normally, I think, since we're talking about salaries, we, we'd want to find permanent dollars, and, and I think, I think most of these are, are permanent source type, type funds, but they, I mean, they, they exceed by, by a decent margin, I think, the amount needed to get to that 50th percentile for the remainder of this fiscal year. So I know we have a couple meetings to, to finalize this, but just seeing these projected available funds, and that they are in excess of what would actually be needed to accomplish this for the rest of the fiscal year, I think I'd be comfortable leaving it to staff to find the budget adjustments, you know, within what you've identified here, and potentially other similar sources to, to make those corrections, to get us up to that point starting March 24th, and for the rest of the, of the current fiscal year, and then just one of our projects, this coming budget cycle, is just going to have to be, how much more can we bite off to address in a responsible way for next fiscal year? And we'll, and again, we might have to do that a couple of times, right? So, yeah, I appreciate your memo here. I think that the items that you note in paragraphs one through eight are, are reasonable sort of places to look for these dollars. I mean, of course, we'd, we'd want to, I think, avoid taking more from a particular department's budget than would be needed to adjust for their personnel, I would think, and, you know, so not, not raiding and creating an imbalance that way, and, and similarly with, with other potential new sources of revenue, not immediately allocating them to a particular use, because it's very hard to, to change an allocation once, once you've made it in a budget like this. So, but just to get us to accomplish the job for this current fiscal year, again, and we can continue to have conversation on this, but I think allowing staff to operate within paragraphs one through eight of these potential sources of revenue is a, in my, in my view, a perfectly reasonable way to, to start solving this problem. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley, and I would agree with what you said, a reasonable approach and moving that forward, so I thank you for those comments. Any other com, council comments this evening? And thank you, Mr. Kroll, for bringing some potential solutions forward, which is what council had asked at the previous meeting when Evergreen was presented. So knowing we have the potential, March 24th is a potential implementation date, and we have the two meetings coming up before that, so just some procedural questions, perhaps, would it be in the form of a, a bill at the next council meeting? Okay, so we have some direction then to move that forward, so we will keep that going then. Okay, any other questions on this topic? All right, thank you all again. And item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We have our four standing committees. We'll start with administration.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, finance?
We are ceding our normal meeting time this week for the, the benefit of the Public Safety Committee, and we're happy to do so, but everyone can enjoy Ms. Perry's financial reports, which I believe have already been distributed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and public safety.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Councilman Hensley, for helping us out. We will meet at 7:30 this Thursday in the police training room.
Okay, and public works and planning?
I mean, I think we're just on a normal, normal schedule for that one.
Okay. And anything, any other announcements by council? Councilman Kemna?
I was just, I was just going to share, a couple weekends ago, I had the opportunity, and I think you might have been present at the Night to Shine event held by Capital City West Christian Church, and I know Chief Schofield, Chief Wildy, and also Sheriff Wheeler and their staff was very, very present and active, so I just wanted to thank them for being a part of. being a part of that. Um, it was a special night. They had a hundred and seventy-three, I think, guests and 500-plus volunteers. Um, so, um, great, great community, um, involvement. And, uh, like I said, it was a great, great night to be a part of. So.
Wonderful. Thank you for being there.
For, I think a couple of gentlemen in the back were also part of it. So, um, it was good.
That is great. Well, the brief time I was there, I did hear that one of the highlights was apparently when the firefighters got up on stage and did the YMCA or something like that. So I don't know. I'm really sorry that I missed that performance, but they were sure talking about it when I got there. But thank you all for being there and for your involvement. Anything to add on that event? Okay. Uh, any other council announcements? Uh, for my announcements, I did want to mention, we had a CPR training last week at the police department training room. And we had, uh, a good turnout. Councilman Lester was there that evening and some city staff. And we had our firefighters and Cole County EMS that did the presentation. And you'll see up on the screen, there's a few photos from that evening. And, uh, it was, I was teaching us hands-only CPR. And that is something that I've never had the opportunity to learn. And it's something that we should all learn and just learning the steps to take in those emergency situations. And, um, I know like Chief Schofield said, because I asked the question, how often should that training be done? And just keeping that, that, uh, memory of how to do it because it's something you don't do very often. So even if you've had the opportunity to have CPR training, please consider, um, to do that. For being Heart Month, we, we hope to keep this an annual event and something that we can keep doing every year. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Schofield to tell us a little bit about, for those of you that, um, would like to learn more and some opportunities. Um, and I know many of you remember a couple of months ago when we had firefighter Joel Swater and he recognized his mother Hiroko Swater who did life-saving CPR and the person whose life she saved was even here with us. So it brings home the importance of why we want to learn that. Um, and then also I'll have Chief Schofield give us a, a safety briefing. We talked about that at the, at, uh, training as well, like learning where the AEDs are. And some of us may not know where they are here at, uh, City Hall. So I'll turn it over to Chief Schofield.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And, and we appreciate you championing this cause. It, it is important to, uh, to be situationally aware. And for those of you that weren't aware, we do have an AED in this building. If you go out the, uh, double doors to the right, uh, near the entrance to the, uh, the copy and mailroom, right next to the elevator, is a, a cabinet that has, uh, an AED in it as well as a stop the bleed kit in there as well. So, uh, we would encourage everybody to, when you go into a building, look at all the safety features, the entrances, the exits, the fire extinguishers, the AEDs, uh, anything that you might need to know should an emergency arrive. And then have a plan of how you're going to, uh, respond to that incident, uh, should it occur. So again, Mayor, we thank you for, uh, spearheading the effort, um, last week. And, uh, we had a great, great class. Uh, we're supported very well, not only by our own folks. Captain Billy Bolden was the primary instructor, but, but also by Cole County EMS. You can see in that picture there, Chief Hoy was there to, uh, to also be there to support it with his folks, uh, from the ambulance. We got to see some of their equipment and talk about some of the things that we deal with, uh, and that you might have to deal with as a bystander performing CPR. We would also recommend that if you would like to seek that training, and we're unable to make that event, uh, you can go to, uh, colecounty.org under EMS. And it has, uh, a tab where it talks about, uh, community outreach and training. That's where they talk about the different class offerings they have, uh, as well as redcross.org. Uh, they also have a drop-down menu of different, uh, CPR options that are available. Or you're welcome to call our office and we can try to get you in contact, uh, with, uh, either one of our trainers or one of theirs. So recommend that everybody do it at least every five years, but preferably maybe even once a year. We, we try to do it annually.
Thank you, Chief Schofield. And again, thank Billy for teaching the class. He is made to teach things like that. He had, uh, he said he was gonna make it fun and he did. And it's hard to make something like that actually fun. But it, he made it where you would remember, uh, what you were doing and was very, a great teacher, very helpful.
He certainly has a passion for it, so.
You can tell. So that was great. So, uh, appreciate that. And we'll make that an annual tradition for our city staff and reminding you when you go to different, uh, buildings to seek out AEDs and know where they are. I know a lot of our parks, we, we noted that, that, uh, several parks have them. And you are actually bringing more in. Uh, Mr. Spalding is bringing more to other parks. So places where the public gathers is good to have those. So we appreciate that. Thank you. Um, other announcements, I was just gonna mention that Friday night was family skate night at the Jefferson City Washington Park Ice Arena. So we all had a chance to get out there. Several of y'all were there with your families. And it's a great opportunity and reminder because we take for granted sometimes, we have those opportunities to go skating and not all communities have that. So it's something that we grow up with here and we get to take our families and kids and enjoy that. So it was very cool to have that. So, um, if you haven't been there lately, it's a lot of fun. Any other announcements? All right. Item nine, we don't have, uh, our, our student representative is not here this evening, Octavia. So we'll go on to item 10. The presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. Uh, we have three people signed up, but I will start with, um, our applicant for bill 22106, I believe, um, is here this evening. So welcome. So, uh, and before you got here, I know there was some discussion that this bill would likely be placed on the informal calendar, meaning it wouldn't be voted on this meeting. But we'd still like to hear from you. And then we have some other people here that would like to speak as well. So welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, council. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you all may have or, and as it pertains to the, uh, subdivision replating. So, um, my name is Timothy Joseph, um, with Zill Enterprise. Um, the business was started. Um, I was in business here with a partner. I came here in 2010. We started rehabbing houses and creating, you know, properties for people to live in. Um, I did it. I got out to Marine Corps, my brother and I, and the guys that worked for me, we're all Marines. Uh, so we decided to come together and we purchased this land. And that's how this all came about. So.
Well, we appreciate you being here. And we know there's, uh, a need for housing in the community. Um, we also know at the last meeting, there was some questions that came up. And it's our understanding that you would be talking with the neighbors. Uh, and we appreciate that. So I'll, I'll turn it over first and ask if council has specific questions. And then we'll see if the speakers may have questions. So we may have to call you back up to answer those. But council, any, uh, questions? Uh, Councilwoman Ward?
Um, just a comment and a question. Uh, thank you for reaching out and speaking to me last week. And you did clarify a lot of the concerns that we did hear. Um, one being, uh, you do plan to live in this area, build a, build a home and?
I do.
Okay.
I was living.
It was just a question that came up, um, a concern. So.
Yes, I do. I actually live in the cul-de-sac. So yes.
Okay. And then the other one I believe was, uh, blasting. Um, that, would there be any blasting that is occurring to?
There's no blasting, none at all. Um, so they came out, I own the lots behind the cul-de-sac as well and below. So, uh, on Franklin Street, I owned the lot. So they came out, we did a pre-dig. There's rock there. So the excavator explained, he said, your best bet is just to, you know, pour a slab, pour your footings and just work from there. So it goes about three and a half, four feet down. That's the best solution. He, we looked at all the land. We've been up there several times. Uh, we looked at the land, what, what it's, uh, made of. And basically, it's gonna be a lot of dirt being moved. So in the dirt that's being moved from the top, we're gonna use it to shore up the back. Uh, well, the bottom of the hill because there's a, 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 a deep slope, a slope. When you get to lots, um, six, five and six, so that's gonna be backfield for lots five and six. And those two homes, uh, have basements. But one, lots 10, nine, eight and seven, it's gonna be slab on grade. There's no blasting, there's no blowing up, there's none of that. So, just moving the dirt.
Okay. Any other council questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I've got a few questions. Good evening. It's nice to meet you.
As well. Thank you.
Um, is your business based here in town?
It is. So I started a business here. I blew adventures, um, Regina Marion Homes. Uh, if you're the gentleman that looked it up, I purchased the land here about three, four years ago. I was, me and myself and Barbara Brandle, if you look it up. So I bought her out so I could have the land and develop it as I see fit.
Gotcha. Are there, um, renderings or any pictures or sketches of what these houses might look like?
There is. So the process was to get everything approved. Once everything was approved, I was gonna reach out to the neighbors and have like a reception for them to show them what I was doing. But the way it happened, I think it was kinda, I don't wanna say zealous, but I think the neighbors were concerned about what was taking place and how it was to take place. And basically, I haven't gotten it approved yet. So with, you know, with care and concern, like I was telling Mr. Byron, being a good steward, I'm gonna live in the community. So I don't want to create no ill will towards anyone.
Sure. Yeah. And there can be a chicken and egg sort of thing sometimes when folks are trying to make something happen that isn't currently possible, you know, within a certain set of, uh, of parameters. But yeah, I mean, certainly the communication with, with the neighborhood, uh, especially in this neighborhood where, you know, I, I got, a lot of calls from, from folks who live, whose homes are either visible in this picture or just outside of frame, who all of a sudden saw all these flags going up. Um, and, you know, I was, I was sorry not to have really any more information to share with them than, than they had at that point. Um, and I think part of, for me personally, um, you know, the issue is not necessarily that someone wants to build houses on six lots, uh, over in this neighborhood. I said it last time and I'll say it again. I mean, that, that doesn't give me any heartburn whatsoever. Um, I, I think, I think on, on top of the, um, just unknown of what was going on over there, I, I think a big part of the concern is putting almost twice as many houses onto this, like 1.9 acres of land than is, than is currently permitted by the, by, by how it is plotted currently. So the, the size of the homes, what, how, how large are the homes projected to be?
Every one of those homes will be over 1,500 square feet. Every one of those lots are greater than 6,000, 6,400 square feet. So when you look at a home and you look at the sizes that's gonna be placed there, and you can compare them to what you have there at present, it'll be very nice homes. So, I mean.
Do they have garages?
It will have two car garages each home. There's a, if you, I mean, if you look at those lots, I, I heard the question about the frontage. So if you look at the front, the, the, the front of those lots.
And if you wanna speak in the mic in that way, yeah, there's some people online. That way they can hear. Perfect.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So the setbacks, if you look at the setback where they start and you come back, there's a huge taper on each one of those lots. So even if you came back to the rear setback, you still have what? 30 feet of backyard? With a house that would be 30 feet deep? That's a lot of yard. That's a lot of house. So I mean, I, I would, I would extend an invitation for you to come up and take a look at it and then ask me questions while you own the property.
Oh, I, I'm very familiar.
Yeah. But I mean, have you been there since it's been staked?
I've been there three times since it's been staked.
And you think it would, you don't think?
I, I guess my, my concern is how close are the houses going to be to each other?
So the houses, the setback on the side to seven and, seven and a half feet. So you're talking about 14 to 16 feet apart. Some of them are even greater. So if you look at, for instance, for example, if you look at lots seven, eight and nine, I still have 10, 12 feet.
14 to 16 feet. Um, let's see.
I have some renderings with me if you wanna take a look at what I have. Um, the architect is Nick Peckham. So I went to Nick when I first got here and I showed this to him. And he discussed some of this with me. He won't be, Eric McKenzie will be the gentleman that's gonna do the drawings for the homes.
Yeah, we've, we've, um, interacted with Mr. Peckham before on this council. It was a few years ago. Um, who's the construction partner or the contractor?
His name is Chase. Chase, uh, I think it's Chase's last name.
Is he with a, a construction company?
He owns a construction company.
Okay. So Chase's construction company.
I'll give you all the details. I mean, I could, if you'd like me to email it to you, bring it to you, his credentials, I don't have a problem with that either.
I'm just curious who he, yeah. I mean, really all I'm doing here is just getting the basic info that I, I think is sort of like the ground level of what some of the folks in the neighborhood are looking for.
Well, I started building in 2004. I'm from New Orleans. Hurricane Katrina hit. So when Katrina hit, um, I was working, I've been in healthcare for a number of years at that point, prob, I've been in healthcare for 31 years. So I started working to redevelop homes at that time. So I've been doing it. Then I moved here in 2011 and purchased probably 12, 13 homes with Ms. Brandle. And we rehabbed those homes. Um, Central Missouri Community Action reached out to me to help them develop some properties. Okay? Um, Angela Hirsch reached out to me, um, in the community and asked me to work with her to develop some properties because they came and saw some of the work we were doing. So, I mean, I understand the neighbors' concerns. But I just think if they, uh, just give me, I'm gonna have something for them on the 25th of this month. They can come to the link, sit down, and you all are invited to come and see what it is. My goal is to provide quality housing. I know people hate the term affordable and I think that's what the concern in the community is. People don't want something that's gonna bring their community down. I don't wanna bring the community down either. I wanna help build the community. So if I could bring quality housing that people could afford, that's my goal. That's what I would like to do.
Well, we're all, we're all really familiar also with Ms. Hirsch. So that's, that's good. Are you planning to build all at once as in sort of all in one phase or sort of more piecemeal?
Uh, it's not piecemeal and it's not gonna be all in one phase. So I'll build the first one. And it'll be, that's, that'll be a model. Once that model is built, I will sell the rest of the lots. As the lots sell, the construction will, will take place.
Okay. But so will, will you be building them?
I will have a hand in building them, yes.
Okay. But at that point, someone else will own the lot?
No, I still own the lot. Then they could purchase the lot.
No, no, no. I mean, when the, when it's, you said when it's?
If you get a construction loan and you want the lot, then at that point, that is your lot. But I will do the construction. So, building.
Okay. But when, when the person owns the, I wasn't planning to go down. I'm just curious.
Sure.
When the person owns the property, when someone else buys the lot from you, you're still planning to be the person to build?
That's correct.
Okay. And, all right. Um, when, so if this were approved, when would you plan to begin that construction on the, on the model?
Uh, actually, I'm gonna start construction on the house behind those, probably in late April.
When you say behind them?
So if you look at, it's not marked, but, uh, right there. I own that as well.
Oh, okay. So that's where your model would be? And then you have these 10 other lots?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, let's see. So that was that one. And you've done, you mentioned the, the rehab work here around 2010 and then the building in 2004 in New Orleans. Were, were these, but you have like this type of construction experience where it's?
Built two new homes. I built one in Manassas, Virginia, and one in New Orleans. And everything else is pretty much rehab.
And then in terms of financing, like you said, you'll be selling them and then they'll be built based on the construction loans?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I know there were statements made about you going door-to-door. I don't know if that was used as, as sort of a shorthand for wanting to get together with neighbors or if you were literally planning to go door-to-door. But have you, have you had conversations in the neighborhood?
Councilman Henley, I don't do anything shorthand. So my approach to the neighbors is I spoke to what the last neighbor that sold me a property. We had a conversation. My thing was, and Mr. Galbert, I'd speak to Mr. Galbert. I used to speak to him right now. My goal is to make sure the neighbors are informed. I'm not gonna do anything underhanded, backhanded or shorthanded. So.
No, by shorthand, I didn't mean anything underhanded. I meant, were you using, I didn't know if you were using go door-to-door as a, literally as in you go to the door and knock on the door, or if you simply meant that you would be reaching out in some way to?
Literally. If that's what it takes for the neighbors to be comfortable, I will get invitations and walk in each one of their doors and introduce myself and make sure they know who I am and what I'm doing.
Okay. So you're, you're planning? Okay, so you're, you're planning to proactively reach out to them or you're waiting for them to-
Wednesday, I, I just went and got invitations made today.
Mm-hmm.
And I will go to each house within that community, knock on their door, or leave an invitation so they could come to the link and see what's going on.
Okay. Have you heard concerns about potential, the, potential feeling of overcrowding? If there are ten houses, you haven't heard?
Not overcrowding.
I mean, if there were ten houses put on six lots, you haven't heard concerns about that?
I have not. This is the first I've heard of that being a concern.
Well, when you start, when you start talking to people in the neighborhood, you might start hearing about concerns that this would create a sense of overcrowding.
May I ask you a question? Have you sit down and looked at the other cul-de-sacs within that community?
The other cul-de-sac, you mean the one that's like right up out of frame right now?
Yeah, yes.
I, yeah, I'm fairly familiar.
And is there a significant difference with the size of the lots?
One of those lots is quite large, I know, the one at the end. Um.
At what end?
I, I have to think that they're more than sixty-four hundred square feet lots.
Okay, and how much of that land is being used? How much of that land is viable land?
Is viable land?
Land that's being used. You have a house, you have, for instance, the house that's right here. The, right next to the last lot I own, which is lot three. They own that lot next to, one lot over, and then they own all that land behind it.
I'm looking, I'm sorry.
So you gotta-
Lot, oh, lot three is up on Roland, right?
Okay, if you're on Roland Street.
Yeah.
Lot three is the last lot that's highlighted closer to you. Then you come over one lot and then you come over another lot. That lot. So that's just land, that's sitting there. You have a housing shortage, right, and you have adequate sized lots. Okay, it's private, but it's not being used.
Okay.
Okay, my question is, okay, my concern, well, it's not even my concern. I'm just trying to get this plotted to create homes for people that need homes.
And we appreciate that. Um, and I, I think when you're talking about open space there, and also, I'm not exactly sure what the topography is there of that particular triangle. I mean, there, there is, that, the neighborhood there that is sort of centered on the screen right now is, I mean, maybe the best sledding hill in town. So I, so I don't know, I don't know if that extends over into that wooded triangle that you just highlighted. But I, you know, the, the open spaces in this neighborhood also were kind of one of the signature elements of it. And that's not the only big open yard. Anyway, um.
For Councilman Hensley, may I ask you another question?
Yes, sir.
What's most important, housing or open spaces? I mean, I, I'm here, I came here. I wanna live here. This is a beautiful piece of land. You have a college on one side, university, you have a high school. I went and met the principal and the shop teachers there. And I went and met the dean of the university. They all say the same thing, it would be great. You just opened the police academy right behind the university. You need housing for that. I mean, here you put adequate housing here that a school teacher could afford or some professor at the university? Don't you think that's more important for your community?
I think it's also important not to wreck the, uh, character of a historically significant neighborhood.
Glad you brought that up.
By cramming twice as many houses onto a parcel, uh, as it's currently platted for.
So may I ask you another question, sir? What do you know about that community? You said historic, what do you know about that community?
You want me to sit here and tell you everything I know about the, uh, the Roland Street neighborhood?
Please.
More than we have time for. Everybody bring a lunch?
Hmm, I probably could tell you just as much as you can tell me.
Well, that's fair enough. Well, then we all, then we know how important it is to the folks who live in the neighborhood.
That's why I wanna live in that community. Miss the Roland and Miss Dobie Wiggins, right? They created that community for people like myself, like these people that are sitting here.
Okay, well, there are several people who live in that neighborhood, whose houses are, whose houses are shown on here right now who have shared these concerns with me and who are sitting in this room at the moment. Would you, my, this is my last question. Would you still plan to proceed with this if it wasn't replatted and was just left at the six lots?
Yeah.
You would, okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there, um, any other questions? And we, we appreciate the opportunity to, to be able to discuss and, and hopefully find, uh, the best solution. So, uh, any other questions? Councilman Spencer?
You talked about a, an event at the link at the twenty, on the twenty-fifth. What time is that?
It's two o'clock, two o'clock to four o'clock.
Two o'clock to four o'clock, okay. Thank you very much.
I have some pictures, I'm gonna just show you gentlemen this ladies-
I, I would be interested to see your rendering, absolutely, thank you.
Did you get the date and time for that? Okay.
Well, that's nice. It's very nice.
The lot here that I was talking about digging on, that's the plans for it. Redmond is the excavator, he came out, showed him the plans.
And if you wanna speak in the mic and that way everybody can, thank you.
Those are the plant, this, those are the plans for Ro, those are the images for Roland Street. The, the artists are drawing the renditions right now. These are the floor plans for, this is the garage for the Roland Street. It's gonna be split level. This is the first floor plan, it's open. This is the living area, okay? And I'll give these to you.
Thank you, thank you.
If you look at those site plans, you can see the square footage on those site plans. Those properties, I understand people assume that because of how it's situated, it's in a cul-de-sac. You're gonna, you put lots in a circle, the front's gonna be small, they're gonna taper off. But if you, si, if you look at what you have in front of you, you can see how those lots just spread out, huge. The lot that I'm talking about living in, I'm a golfer. So I was sitting down talking to the architect about lot seven. I could put, if I wanted to, a pool, a putting green, and a house, and have a detached garage. They're not as small as you think they are. I think what people do is look at the front and they say, oh, that's so little. But look at the back of those lots. Those are very nice lots. Very fair sized houses can fit on those lots. So, I mean-
And if I could just encourage you, and, and I think you're going down the path of trying to communicate to neighbors and, and all that.
Yes, sir.
I've had a similar experience. I had a P U D for my home, we have a, a home-based business. Uh, you know, I know how rumors escalate, it's kinda like the old telephone game and it never really ends up being the same. I mean, uh, one of my neighbors said, you know, heard that I drove sprint cars and I was gonna build a circle track in, in, in my four, four acres of Unbournville Road. Um, so I, I really do encourage you to follow through with, with, you know, engaging with the neighbors and just, you know, trying to, to navigate those, those flare-ups, if you will. And, 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 and I appreciate your willing, willingness to do that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you very much. These are very attractive. These are beautiful drawings. Yeah, are you, are you planning some way to limit or require the people who buy the lots to build within your, your planned drawings here?
So, yes, sir. So, basically, the footprint, you asked a question about the lots and lot size and home size. We're trying to keep the footprints all the same so they would be appropriate now. Some deviation once you get inside and you start the setup. So if you bought, purchased a home, then you walked in and you walked into your neighbor's house, you're not walking into the same house.
Mm-hmm.
So slight deviations, slight, you know, changes on elevation. But I don't think it'll take away from the neighborhood or I don't think, I think if the neighbors gave it a chance, they'll see it's, you know, it's a positive for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, Councilman Schreiber?
Mr. Joseph, based on the, uh, the photographs you just showed us, the design concepts. So if I approach you and say, look, I would like to purchase one of these lots or whatever, then I would be able to select a specific model so that everything isn't just exactly the same.
That's correct, yes, sir.
And so what you're basically saying, rather than by the width of the lot, you're saying that a lot of the, the house, the square footage of the house itself is because of the depth of the lot. You can go back.
Yes, sir.
That's what you're basically trying to project, correct?
Yes, sir.
So rather than everything looking just exactly the same, like some areas where we have apartments or condos or whatever, then there would be this deviation so that it, it was a blended neighborhood then?
Yes, sir.
That'd fit well together.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Joseph. So, uh, we'll have the, uh, people who are signed up and then we may have to, at the end, have you answer some questions at the end.
Not a problem, ma'am, thank you.
All right, so we'll start with Mr. Michael Hall. Welcome.
Thank you for having me again this evening. So again, I just have questions regarding, and hopefully some of those can be answered. Hopefully some we can answer in the future. Uh, uh, to start with, uh, again, we've, we've talked about the parking situation. I know they've came out and they've measured that cul-de-sac and make sure it's all up to spec, that's great. Um, he said there's gonna be two car, car garages on each home. Now, I'm not sure what the, the lot number is. It's gonna be the one on Marshall, the top one, triangular shaped one there on the map. Uh, that one in, specifically, the hill drops off at the, the sidewalk. So I'm, I'm, I'm unsure how, that'd be quite a lot of backfilling, I would assume. Um, would there be retaining walls that would have to be constructed? Um, is it gonna cause a mudslide into the next, next neighborhood? You know, things along those lines. Uh, again, is it gonna be a constant construction? We've lived in constant construction in our neighborhood for what, the past three, three and a half years since the tornado? It's been construction in our neighborhood ever since. It's all we hear, generators running, hammers going, it's constant. If this is a, an un, unplanned schedule, or there's no scheduled timeline for this construction, that could indefinitely be construction for us. If it's contingent on selling a property and then constructing, that, that's only exponentially longer for us as far as how long this construction's gonna continue. Again, our neighborhood's been surrounded by construction for years now. It's, it's non, non-stop. I mean, from the, the time that they can work out there, they're working every minute they can to get those houses rebuilt. We lost an entire neighborhood over there. And I understand, again, as I said last time, we put a sports complex in there. I think that's great, our school needed it, the kids are gonna do great things with that. But why would we take out two full-sized neighborhoods and then try to squeeze, again, as I said, twice as many lots onto this property than there's already been determined? Now, again, this property plan was set out in the fifties and the, the early fifties is when they, they did this plat. So as far as that, at that time, these properties were decided that they're not feasible to build on because of the grade of the incline, which again leads me back to are we gonna push dirt down the hill? Are we gonna build walls? As again has been stated, the city at this point has no plans to modify the cul-de-sac. So anything that needs pushed out from that point, where at on the property, again with that top property, are we talking about building that house? Because where the logo is on that property, you'd have to have fifty-foot stilts for it to sit flat right there nearly. I mean, it's, it's a pretty good steep hill. Um, and then back to the piece of property that was said to be public property or city property, that I know of as private property, again, another neighborhood, it's a shame they're not here tonight. But they do own that property, their children play in that property. There was little children playing in that property today. As far as I'm concerned, as a citizen of this city, there's no better way for any of this property to be used than children playing in it. That whole hill, again, is this city's second largest snow slope. The first one's obviously on Lincoln, um, but that one's the second largest. So, again, my concern here is are we gonna live in constant construction? Where are they even gonna park the, the construction equipment? There's not a flat place other than that cul-de-sac to park a bulldozer at to push dirt. So are we gonna clog the cul-de-sac? Are we gonna run equipment up and down the hill every day, all day? I mean, again, my concerns are just for my quality of life. And then again, I, I can appreciate new houses in the neighborhood, I understand that, that's gonna look good out there. But my front door looks directly at Lincoln. My home, my title says campus view subdivision on it. I stare at Lincoln, that's the most beautiful view that I've found in this city. I get to stare out my door every day at that. I know that that may not stay the same indefinitely, and it may not stay the same starting in, in April. But until then, my title of my house says campus view. If you put ten houses in front of me, I no longer have campus view. You know, I mean, that's my own personal, of course, but, but again, the constant construction's not, we don't, we don't want that. We, we already have it. Again, thank you for your time today, you guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Um, next we have Patsy Johnson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilperson, and a guest. I appreciate your time. I, I have concerns about the spacing, about putting double houses on property that wasn't meant for that. Um, I'm very concerned about the overcrowding of the area. We already have, have parking that has, is permit parking. We're, we're just really overcrowded in that area. We don't have that much green space. And if we put concrete in buildings everywhere, we're more crowded than most people in their neighborhoods. Um, I just, it's just problematic to look at putting that much construction and ongoing. I, I just can't, I can't wrap my head around it. And as he said, we've dealt with constant construction this whole time with the tornadoes and, you know, uh, building from that and everything that we've had to deal with. I just think it's a lot to put on a neighborhood that has constantly been encroached upon, you know? Um, I, I don't know where the equipment would go, um, to build, just like he said. So it's just a problem. We have traffic, foot traffic. Our kids from the neighborhood, we have Lincoln University on this side, we have Thorpe Garden on this side, we have J C. Kids are constantly walking. I even see it as a danger issue. So. I just think it's too much. It's too much. I think it will change the landscape of the neighborhood. I think it takes away the little bit of green space that we have. I don't have a problem with the gentleman coming in, putting some houses there. It's his property, but if it destroys our property and it disturbs our peace, it disturbs and, and causes problems with kids and can cause danger, I think it's a problem. If, there's too many unknowns still. I mean, we can say it probably will be okay, it probably will, but it's gonna disturb us. And ongoing, ongoing construction that we don't even know how long that construction would last. You know, I almost, I truly feel like each councilperson should go and look at that hillside. Look at that area, walk it, please. Because looking at it on paper doesn't show what, what we're really dealing with here. You know, we wouldn't all be out here and there's a lot more that would have been here today had they known that, 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 uh, Mr. Joseph would have shown up. We were told it was gonna be put off, but some of us wanted to make sure that we knew what was going on. So some of the residents showed up anyway. But all of us have a concern. This is, this is our home, this is our, our little sanctuary. And we already, we love the area that we live in. It's, it is a historical area. And many neighbors that I live with, you know, are retired professors from Lincoln's. Some of these neighbors have, have been moved around this city two or three times because of urban renewal, because of different issues throughout this city, where they've had to move. And some of them are like, I'm not moving anymore, I don't wanna move. They're older, they're retired. And, you know, the constant, the constant issues that they've had to deal with, with racism and different issues and, and, uh, and the, the building and, and being forced to move around has been really hard on them in life. And I just think it's, when we look at building, we all know that, um, we need more housing. But the housing we need needs to be appropriate for the area. And it shouldn't cause hardship for the ones that have lived and paid taxes, you know, to, to be there. We ought to be able to have some kind of peace there. So I think we ought to be very careful on what we allow- some kind of peace there. So, I think we ought to be very careful on what we allow to come in our city and in our neighborhood and make sure it's right for that area.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. And now, we have Jocelyn King.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I am a resident of the area, and when I first heard about this, actually, I didn't hear about it. I was out walking around, and I saw the little flags in the ground across the street. What is this? Knew nothing about it. No surveying or questioning of neighbors. How do you feel about this? How do you feel about that? Especially when you consider the fact, I've been there 40 years, and a number of other people have been there longer than that. And all of a sudden, here comes in this major change, and nobody knows about it. I can appreciate this reception at the link to talk with everybody. We're very eager to talk to you. I'm just surprised I'm just hearing about it today. I do have some appointments that afternoon. I'm gonna try to work around it, because I do have a lot of questions, and I do want to be in concert with this. I will say, yes, Jefferson City needs more housing. Jefferson City needs more affordable housing. And then, that's my next thought, the affordable housing. There are different levels of affordable, but I have not heard how approximately the price of each of these units will be, or the average, or anything. Is that also going to be much greater than what we have now, and is it going to affect our tax base? We have no idea. We just know this construction is coming up. And as far as the neighborhood, yes, congestion has been a problem, not because of people living there, but because of the activities that go on around there with J.C. School, with other activities. For example, and I think some of the problem has been alleviated, but it used to be every day after school let out, there was a long line of cars going up Roland Street, the high school kids leaving, but coming down our street. I came home the other day, and there's six school buses lined up on Roland Street waiting to make a left turn on Lafayette. Now, you add to this, this other stuff going on. I mean, we can't handle it. The construction and the construction equipment, oh my goodness. I have bad asthma. How many years will it be before I can peacefully live there? I used to live in St. Louis, and living in St. Louis was a big problem for me because of the Mississippi River. It's very muddy and dank. I was sick all the time, and I had to leave. Now, this is about construction, but as far as affecting quality of life, and I know there are other asthma people, and then we don't know what's coming, how much is coming, how long will it last, and this type of thing. These are very important concerns that need to be raised now and not after the deal is approved. There won't be much we can do after the deal is approved, but leading up to the deal being approved, we can sit down and work things out between us, okay? The plans that have been made did not have the consideration of the concerns of the people of the neighborhood. It was a good idea. There's the space. Let's just plan this, plan that, you know, like this. I am glad to hear there won't be any blasting and things like that, but still, we need to be involved in the decision and before the approval, and that's what we'd appreciate. I thank you very much. Also, there is one more thing I want to mention. When you get down to 16, other topics.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's all we have signed up under this item. So, what we'll do is, Mr. Joseph, you've heard some of the questions, so I know you have your open house coming up on the 24th, February 24th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the link. So, you can address and answer those, but you can also share your contact information with the residents? Oh, I'm sorry. Was it 24th or 25th? Saturday the 25th. Okay, my apologies. Saturday the 25th, open house at the link from 2:00 to 4:00. So, we might, because I know we'll have to move on to some of the other business, too, but if there's... But you're welcome to come to the podium, and we... I know you have the open house. You can... Does council want to have any of those questions answered at this time, or wait till... But we'll let you give us a very brief overview.
I'll make this brief.
Okay.
So, cost came up, which was very... I'm glad that came up. If I built on the lots they have right now, just with the cost of housing in Jefferson City as it is, those houses would be upwards of a half a million dollars or more. If you look at those lots, that's there now. Easy. I mean, because houses in this community at present are selling for $250,000 to $300,000. I'm trying to get these houses sold for under $300,000, and that's a concern. So, your tax base, if I build a house there, and I have to build it on a lot that size, it's... I mean, that's something to consider. And the other thing, in terms of parking, the reason why with the setbacks and the way parking is, the average garage is 20 by 20. 24 by 24 is large. You're gonna have 25 feet from the curb to your garage. Easy. That gives you two, four... You possibly can park four, five, maybe six cars in that space. So, I mean, all these things are things that have been considered, and this is the reason why I went to CMPS. Paul came out, he surveyed the land. He told me what needed to be done for those two lots I spoke of. So, it's not something that we just did and decided, hey, we want to do this and drew a picture. Now, it was, you know, time was spent, money was spent, a lot of consideration was put into it. So, with the neighbors, I mean, I know they have concerns, and I'll answer or address any questions they have. But I just want to say thank you all for your time, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. And if you could, like I said, to work with the neighbors and get... You heard some of the questions today, so we'll... We know that it sounds like you're gonna work towards that path of communicating, so...
I will.
Wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions from council? Okay, we will move on to item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill passes. Bill's introduced, 22-107.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2022-2023 annual budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Police Department Fund.
Chief Weldy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would request a supplemental appropriation from the general fund, specifically out of the insurance claims to cover the purchase of a new police car. In the last year, we had two cars that were wrecked and not able to continue service. So, by utilizing that insurance money, we could hope to replace at least one of those in our fleet by utilizing the insurance claims that we received. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Bill's pending, 22-100.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $1,244,046 design build agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated for the BioSolids Improvements Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This clerk indicated a design build project with Burns &amp; McDonald, and the design cost is, she already mentioned, a little over $1.2 million. The total project's estimated to be over $10 million. We talked about this project being one of our leading projects in our bond discussion when we... In our rate discussion, when we put that through. Basically, the BioSolids is what's left over after the process to treat the waste, the wastewater at the plant, which would then be utilized on farm fields in the area. Our equipment's over 25 years old and is in need of replacement, so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? And there is a substitute?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And the substitute was clearing up some insurance issues.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion to accept the substitute?
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We will take up bill 22-100 as substituted. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes, 22-101.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Infotech in the amount of $213,147.32 for the storage area network replacement project.
Mrs. Perry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would approve the use of a cooperative agreement for a contract with Infinitec to replace the storage area network that was approved during the FY '23 budget to come from the sales tax G-Gleaming Funds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Bill passes, 22-102.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $325,918 agreement with Don Schneider's Excavating Company Incorporated for the Westview and Force Main replacement project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, a construction contract with Don Schneider's, it will replace a old and sometimes failing Force Main in the Westview Heights subdivision. Have to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes, 22-106.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of TC 3C subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, of course, this bill had some discussion. I'll go through and start from the beginning, and first, the property that the bill is subject to has shown up on the screen. It consists of six residential lots located there on Marshall Street cul-de-sac, and some, a couple lots fronting on Roland Street. In the bottom right hand of the screen, corner of the screen, is J.C. High School, and the link is just off the screen to the south. As mentioned, six single-family lots. This bill would approve a replat of those six lots into 10 lots, and there's the subdivision plat that's proposed, shown up on the screen with the name of TC 3C. Seven of those lots would be on the Marshall Street cul-de-sac, and three lots fronting on Roland Street. Utilities are essentially in place for the subdivision, so it's not... Doesn't include any public improvement plans. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the subdivision plat on a vote of seven to zero at their January 12th meeting. As mentioned, the applicant has requested that the bill be placed on the informal calendar with a delay to the March 6th meeting, so they could pursue some engagement with surrounding neighbors. With that, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions the councilmen have.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? Okay, Councilman Lester?
I will request that this bill, 106, be placed on the informal calendar.
Okay, so that will be placed on the informal, and we will take that up at the March 6th meeting. All right, nothing currently on the informal. And item 15, Resolutions, 22-43.
A resolution authorizing the city to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Cole County for an integrated computer-aided dispatch system.
Chief Weldy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm happy to have Chief Eric Hoy from Cole County Emergency Medical Services, as well as our Fire Chief, Matt Schofield, here to answer any questions as well. But this resolution would be for consideration on an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Jefferson and Cole County related to a joint CAD vendor... Venture that we've undertaken. Having Cole County EMS directly connected to our CAD system and the 911 center is... Has, I think, already shown that it increases efficiency, because we're constantly receiving phone calls, and we're able to distribute that data directly to Cole County EMS via network as opposed to a transferred phone call. So, we have gone down that path already, and Cole County has invested in that, but the intergovernmental agreement would be the governance of that agreement and of that joint CAD system related to, you know, future plans for, you know, upgrades or future plans for expansion or anything like that. So, we've kind of set the ground rules right now that we've got a MOU in place, and then as we expand services, if we decide to do so, we've got a governance committee identified to govern how that process would look. But be happy to answer any questions, and Chief Hoy is here also.
Welcome, Chief Hoy. We're glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you. I will say that upon coming on board and analyzing our public safety system, there wasn't a lot of room for major steps forward. However, this integrated CAD system really does represent a true leap forward in the service that we're able to deliver to the citizens. When we look at the way that we were doing it, it's something that we've all inherited. It's probably became more outdated than we would have liked it to be. But just in the last week alone, since we put this system in place, we've seen a dramatic increase in service and streamlining of getting resources to people having medical emergencies. There were instances in this week of looking at certain high-level calls where we had resources rolling within 45 seconds of receiving the 911 call at the city. So, that is a huge, measurable improvement, and I'd just like to thank not only the public safety agencies that have been involved, but also IT and the legal departments who have made this process what it is, and thank you. And I think we've made some great improvements.
That is wonderful news, and thank you for that, and we appreciate the partnership that you all continue to have to encourage and enhance our efficiencies with public safety. So, thank you. And response time as well. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Councilman Spencer?
Chief Hoy, you mentioned the standard streamlined effect of 45 seconds. Could you elaborate to what we originally were at, the threshold, and now where we are now?
Yeah, historically, unfortunately, I didn't pull any data for this meeting, but I'll just walk you through how historically 911 calls were answered. So, as we know, all 911 calls in Cole County are routed to the public safety answering point, which is the Jefferson City Police Department dispatch. So, if you call 911 within the county, it will be answered there. Previously, if you had some sort of medical emergency, the Jefferson City dispatcher would take your information, verify your address. If needed, start the fire department, and then the call would be transferred over to EMS. Because our systems were not tied together, we would have to start back at ground zero with that caller. So, verifying their address, getting all the details, and then, after that, we would launch into our emergency medical dispatch, which gives the pre-arrival instructions and starts gathering that information for responders. That delay and not having that information shared really, you know, caused a huge increase in the amount of time to get resources out the door. And then, also, from a silo and information-sharing aspect, any of the information that we were gathering, our partners couldn't see, and any information that the police department communicators were gathering, we couldn't have access to it either. So, with that, all of that has been gone by the wayside.
And just to follow up, there's... It's really frustrating for the caller to having to reiterate that information twice, especially if that person is the one having the medical emergency. That it just amps their adrenaline, their... I mean, so, that's great that we can...
Yeah, absolutely. It made our emergency medical dispatcher's jobs, that's much more difficult, because oftentimes, they would have to start at ground zero, not only try and re-engage the caller, but diffuse them from their frustration of answering the same questions over and over again.
Thank you. Any other questions or council deliberation on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Spencer?
Yes.
Spicer?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you all again. We appreciate it. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. So, we have one individual, Jocelyn... Jocelyn King, signed up. So, if you'd like to come forward, and this is for three minutes. So, in the back, I'll ask you to... If you could just wave when we're at three minutes in the back room there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This has been a concern of mine for a very long time. I've talked to a number of people in the past, people on the city council, Parks and Parks and Rec, sanitation, Lincoln University facilities, whoever I could talk to for their attention. There are not enough trash can facilities in Jefferson City. You have these beautiful Greenway. The Greenway system is fantastic. And you go through a lot of it. You have to walk maybe three-fourths mile before you get to a trash can. We have an ordinance in this city. If we're walking our pets, we are to clean up after them. Then what? I'm carrying it around with me and, oh, she gets to go a second time now. I mean, then I walk there on Edgewood, okay? Lots of park benches, uh, across the street eateries where you can pick up sandwiches, come back and eat it in the park. Then where do you throw your stuff away at? You have to walk clear down to where, um, the restrooms are on Wildwood before you find something. Um, I have talked to, I don't know, I, now, what I'm about to say is purely just stuff I heard in the wind, okay? Um, I'm not saying there's any validity to this, but there seems to have been a matter of who holds the responsibility of handling trash cans, public trash cans. Is this, uh, Parks and Rec? Is this sanitation? Is this the city? Um, I heard one city sanitation person told me that, well, we don't put one here because it's not on the street. We just wanna be able to drive by, dump it and keep going. We don't want to come up on this platform or anything to take care of it, okay? Well, I'm sorry, this is the way the Greenway is built, okay? Um, I, I just totally don't understand. But there are, I'll say, all right, let's say between Dunkland and McCarty, the only one is by the tennis courts. And if it weren't for the tennis courts, there wouldn't be one there at all between, you know, that distance. Now, in Community Park, of course, there are quite a few. You go over on Lincoln's campus, there is nothing until you get to Atkins Stadium. Not Atkins, but the football stadium in Lincoln, okay? And, uh, that's the one, I mean, I just badgered the facilities guy and he put one out there in front of the football field, but there was nothing there before. Uh, then you go on around the Greenway and up, there's nothing. So I just wanted to ask about that and if it's possible, we could get more trash cans.
We appreciate your, uh, comments this evening. Thank you for that, uh, Mrs. King. And, uh, I know that perhaps on your way out before you leave, you could leave your contact information with some of our staff as well that might be able to address some of that too. So Mr. Grellner would likely be the one that might know and then also Mr. Spalding with Parks. So, uh, well, okay. Council have any questions or comments about that? All right. We'll, uh, appreciate your comments. Thank you, Mrs. King. Um, item seventeen, any further council and staff discussion of presentation topics this evening? Item eighteen, any new business? Nineteen, approval of the February sixth, twenty-three closed session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Spicer? Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item twenty, we'll go into closed section pursuant to section six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss, I'm sorry, Mr. Malman.
Um, I would request that in addition to the three topics that's listed there, you also add six-ten-oh-two-one, sub-one attorney-client privilege, uh, communication.
Okay, so go into closed session to discuss, discuss, first of all, real estate, six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-two, and then you're saying six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-one?
Yes.
And then preparations, including any discussions or work product on behalf of a public governmental body and its regular representatives for negotiations with employee groups, section six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-nine, and sealed proposals and negotiating contracts, six-one-oh-point-oh-two-one-twelve. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
And we'll have roll call and then we'll have a few-minute break before we do that. But roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Fitzwater? Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Okay, motion passes. So we'll go into closed session in this room. So we'll have about three minutes to clear the room. And thank you all for being here. Uh, thank you to our scout for being here. If you have any specific questions for the council representatives, now's your chance to come up. If you wanna ask anyone anything, you're certainly welcome to before we go into our closed session. So thank you all for being here tonight.